So tonight on the agenda, what we'll do is talk about the sheriff's department right now and see how we feel about doing that and adding it to the budget or leaving it the way it is. Other than that, on the 19th of the month of December, our next regular select board meeting, we'll have this budget as on the agenda as a regular select board meeting. There'll be very little board orders or anything anyway. And we'll discuss more of the budget at that meeting, but we'll have to go in to executive session on that meeting for a portion, a good portion of this budget because of personnel issues that pertain to the budget.
Should we, should we do the adoption of the agenda and stuff like that first?
Right, right now, tonight's agenda. Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make the motion to adopt tonight's agenda on the 7:14.
Oh, you're a second.
4:30, second.
Any comments or questions by the board?
We have to say that we changed from 4:00 to 4:30.
Oh, in favor?
Uh, with the change, yeah, 4:30.
With the change from 4:30.
Correct.
Okay. So now the sheriff's department, let's talk about the sheriff's.
Do I need to pledge, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I have to pledge. I'm sorry. Very much I'm sorry. I want to. I'm totally out of it tonight. I'm like a bandit. Get what outside?
Um, so I think at our, at our last meeting, which was two days ago, we discussed briefly the sheriff's department and increasing their hours of patrol. I'll publish it. And on this proposed general government budget, I have increased that line item. It's at the very bottom of page two of the general government budget. Currently, we budget $80,340 in the current fiscal year for 32 hours a week. If we increase to 40 hours per week, we would need to budget $105,000. Yeah, $105,000. And so that's reflected on this one that I circulated. The caveat, my communications with Sheriff Fox is he currently has the staff to provide us 40 hours per week. And he's hoping he will have the staff commencing in July of 2023 to provide 40 hours per week, but he can't make any promises. But if we wanted a budget for 40 hours per week, we'd have to budget $105,000.
Almost $25,000 more.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's a slight increase at the hourly rate.
Didn't we set up like the days and the times, like how many days, what time, days of the week that they're here or some other places?
We're, we're supposed to have some, some say in that. Currently and historically, we've sort of, as I've discussed in previous meetings, we've kind of left it up to them, except for when there's special events, i.e. the chili cook-off, Fourth of July celebration, townwide yard sales.
Does that include a weekend date, like a Friday or Saturday?
Um, so traditionally, our constable Kerber, I think, has communicated with them like he's around on Fridays and Saturdays. So historically, they haven't been, but I, I know I talked with the deputy, the current deputy that's assigned to Polton, and I think he's been doing some weekend work. So to answer your question, I think if we, because a contract gives us some flexibility, is this is one we want you here. So if we, if we really pushed it, we could have more control over it. Again, 40 hours a week, you know, because a lot of, a lot of people in town, this is one of their big issues, and we don't see police coverage enough. Well, if we want more, it's going to cost more. So that's the number that we put, I, the number we put out there and.
I guess my only issue is, I mean, they said they don't seem enough, but it doesn't mean he's not in town. He could be in a different area and like that. We all know how that goes.
Yeah.
When was the last, when did you talk to Sheriff Fox?
Uh, December 2nd. And then I communicated through email with him.
Right. I just talked to Lieutenant Bennett today. He said he didn't know if they're going to be able to do it any additional, because he may be losing, he may be losing a deputy. Because they're short, they're so short people, they may have to shift him somewhere else. So I think what we are to do is, you know, obviously it's gonna, it's gonna go up because, just because of inflation costs to do business. If, you know, if they can't provide it, then I still think we should budget additional for it in case it does come up, that they can provide the service.
I'll quote his email of December 2nd of this year. Uh, not the whole thing, but currently with my staffing numbers, I could handle a 40-hour-per-week contract, but without a crystal ball, I can't project if I will still have that capacity in July of 2023. So, you know, take a budget for it and.
Is the dispatching, if they, at some point when they decide they're going to go regional dispatch, that they're, they're gonna have to, they haven't figured out how they're going to pay for it yet. So we might want to just keep that in there for, in case we have to, we have to pay for
Dispatch.
Dispatching by, by call. That's still up in the air.
Yeah. The legislature has. They're talking $55 a call.
Right. So they have to, they have to prove, the legislature has to prove the Department of Public Safety not providing that service, number one. Number two, if they, if they don't provide it, we're gonna have to pay for it.
It's not a lot of calls for $25,000. If it's $55, your call is 454 calls. And if you look at our E911 in our last.
Good point.
Yeah. Total Poltonie 911 calls received between January 1st of 2021, excuse me, 2020, no, excuse me, January 24th, January 1st of 2021 to December 31st of 2021. For Poltonie, there was 1,254 911 calls.
Which 55?
That was up 779.
At $68,200. $970. And we would have to come up with us taxpayers just to pay for
For dispatching.
For dispatching in one year.
That's what I mean, you can't.
That's a serious concern.
You can't budget for inflation, and you can't budget for the unknown. So then they're still talking about paying for it with a county tax, which they don't know how they're gonna do it, because county isn't set up to collect taxes.
Well, well, last I heard, and you can maybe tell me if this is correct, Terry, that they tasked, they tasked some member, they, they created a committee, tasked them with, how are you going to do this? They went through a bunch of stuff and then came back to the state and said, we're not equipped to tell you how we're ready to do this.
Sorry, we're not.
Right.
And I, I was involved in that meeting.
So.
Wanted. And then they had, they formed a committee. They had a meeting at the state level. And then came back and I haven't heard the results of that meeting. So.
So why wouldn't even we discussion start again on this, not until legislature goes back into effect, opens up?
Unless, unless we make it a, you know, there's nobody, nobody's looking at it right now. Bob Schlafter is a guy that is at the, the police cabinet. He's, he's the emergency 911 guy. And he's been involved in it. Unless he's got some crystal ball, I don't know, probably, probably gonna make it, because he's not saying.
I guess what I wonder about is, at the rate they're going with it, and they don't know what they're doing, and the state fiscal year is October 1st through, I don't see where it would affect our '22, '23 budget. I can see it '23, '24.
Possibly.
Possibly, if they do something, but I can't, it doesn't sound like it would affect this one that we're proposing, because.
You mean the '24, '25?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Whereas not, I, but won't budget for it. And this one, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, because.
This one we won't budget for.
I can tell. Isn't what I'm thinking. That's just it, with every town having the same problem.
I mean, they're gonna start bankrupting towns. We won't be able to pay for that.
You know, that's just it.
I mean, we're having a hard time getting our employee salary up to being competitive, and that's at the very lowest end of the scale with surrounding towns.
My suggestion is that you get with the other select board area, select chairman in this area, and start hitting your legislative committees. You know, Patty McCoy, Bill Cantil.
Bill Cantfield.
And then Jared Samus, he's not, he's not represented yet, but he will be in January. Start, start hitting them for answers, because if you don't, they're not gonna give them.
They're gonna run over us.
So.
Main topic.
I just wanted to throw that out there. I didn't want to muddy the water, but.
Yeah, main topic up there this year, those can be property taxes. That's a huge one.
Taxes will probably go along.
Okay. Um, oh, how does the board feel about this? Going, that's an extra $25,000. How do you, Terry, you're, you're for it. Cheryl?
I think a lot of people have talked to us about it, that they want more. I, I guess, I'm just wondering, like, I know the Flynn's like, the people that are saying as they want more police, what are we gonna do when we have that, like, is it gonna cover the places that people are talking about? That's what I'm wondering. Will have some say in that, maybe say, well, the, the complaint is South Poltonie, the complaint is.
Well, I mean, it's, it's that way now, and if, and as we know, the, the, the deputy that's assigned to Poltonie now started an email and circulated, hey, if you got issues, if you got certain complaints about certain areas, um, email me and I'll, I'll address it. And they did that before the current deputy was here. They would stop by here and say, hey, is there any particular place people are complaining about? So whether, you know, I don't ride in the car with them, so I'm, I'm not, I don't know if they're, you know, responding to people.
Do you know if people have approached them? I mean, that have contacted us and have approached him too, to take care of them?
I have, I have people that have done that, yeah.
Tell me that they feel a lot safer because he is.
And you see it out on the neighborhood watch, the comments on it, they're very positive toward what? Seeing him around and like that.
So, I mean, this deputy is.
That's what I'm saying. So they still, you still feel that we need that extra coverage?
People are asking for it. I mean, we don't, we don't vote, vote on, in Poltonie on the budget like some towns, like every single line they vote on.
That's, yeah, that's, I know. I wish there were certain things that we did vote on like that, so we could actually.
So, you know, whether or not they see a bottom line with all the numbers lumped together, like, geez, we can't afford that. And even though it includes, you know, the up in coverage that a lot of people are asking about. But I also think, and this is just from people communicating with me, I think people think more police are gonna solve, instantly solve problems that, like, you know, like the drug house. If you remember the last year, I circulated an anonymous letter, oh, here's a drug house in here, here and here. And, you know, Jeff and I went right to the drug task force and had phone calls with them, and the basement's like, my hands are tied. I don't have the manpower. I don't, I don't have the hours for people. So, you know, and I don't go online, but I heard people saying, oh, here's a, like, one person who's been terrorizing neighborhood with speeding and, and things of that nature. And people are like, well, select board's not gonna do anything about it. Like, what, I don't know what they think the select board can do about criminal activity, other than bring it to the police attention.
They basically get a license plate number or something, and what you said, let the sheriff know what's going on with it. He'd be on the lookout for that particular one.
So I guess what my point is, you could have a deputy here 24/7 and you, you probably would have some faction of the community thinking, well, they're not doing enough. Um, so whether or not eight hours a week is gonna, is gonna really be some miracle cure to all the ills Poltonie, I, I.
It's probably the minimum we can do, though.
No, I, I agree. But, you know, when you got state police telling people, oh, all the criminals are using the rail trail as a, as a, you know, a, from point A to point B to commit crimes, and that's not what people have reported to me, that the state police have said to them. Well, we can't, like, man the rail trail 24/7.
You can't close it.
We can't close it. We don't even own it.
I was gonna say, that one's owned by the state. We can't control that.
I guess, control, I guess I'm just saying that people have a high expectation, and they think, they may think eight hours more a week is gonna cure it, but we don't know.
It's on, it's on the radar. Last week, I spoke to the new commissioner of public safety and asked her, I said, you want to talk about dispatching? She said, not really. I said, well, it's on, it's on everybody's radar. So she did. She talked to me about what, what her plans are, but they plan on doing just what they want, which is get away from it. So.
So you're, are you for increasing that to eight hours?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we think that's gonna be effective, I guess. I just want to make sure if we're gonna put that much money into it, it's gonna be utilized in the right way. So, okay.
How do you feel about it, Carol?
I don't think it's gonna make any difference myself. I, I, my feeling is that unless the person is sitting right in front of somebody tells it, saying that they're not seeing enough hours, they're still not going to be happy about it. I guess we can leave it in and see what the bottom line looks like.
Leave it in. It's a place to start.
Just to start with.
It's a place to start with the budget. Okay, so, so we'll leave it in at $105,000, that $25,000 increase, which would be an increase of eight hours. As we go through, we'll see where our bottom line of the budget comes out. And as it stands right now, with everything in it, including the library, the, uh, the, uh, rescue squad increase, the library increase, the state police increase, the salary increase.
Sheriff's department increase.
Sheriff's department increase. With everything that we have increased right now, the bottom line on just the general general government for the town of Poltonie would be a 10.72% increase. That's, that's quite substantial.
Well, for.
Look, can't go in, we can't talk about any ways to reduce it to where I go into session.
Right. But I just want to say, and then on the highway budget, if I can just interrupt for one second.
Sure.
I did confirm with Katrina Davenport of the Poltonie Rescue Squad that she, she can attend the meeting on the, on the 19th. We did discuss her requested allocation, which is, um, which has doubled from $42,000 to $84,560.
Is that, how much, how much did the library go up?
The library, I just saw 8.48% is what they proposed.
8.48% increase?
8.48, I believe.
$15,000.
It went from $175,937 to No, a little over $15,000, not quite $15,000.
We do have a breakdown from them, how they want to do their allocation, I believe.
Yeah, I did, I did that, so I went to the board. Um, the chief Kerber at the fire department has requested an increase in the fire equipment fund from $100,000 to $110,000. At one point, some of, some of the board members here might not have been on the board then. No, I don't think Cheryl wasn't, and Carol, you might not have been. The board discussed, similar to what they discussed with the rescue squad last year of a, of a, you know, a stage increase of the equipment placement fund. I think you were on the board, Terry, and I know you were.
You mean the fire department?
Yeah. Um, and at one point, the board put the brakes on it because of, you know, trying to keep the, the budget increases more palatable to the, to the voters. Kind of said, okay, we're gonna keep you at $100,000 for, for a while. And now he's requesting to bump, to bump it, to start bumping it back up so that he can stay on schedule for the replacement of his fund, or excuse me, his, um, equipment, which, I don't know, several meetings ago, he came and, when we talked about the one truck that he's that we're purchasing, um, using those funds, he reminded the board of what the plan is for, um, replacement. Keep saying fund, yeah, the funds, but by the equipment.
This might be a budget session where we may have to look at something of that nature to slow it down and possibly, we may have to look at reducing it to, uh, for a year or two so that we can do the things we need to do to catch our personnel up. Um, that's, that's one thought in this budget that, um, it might hurt a little bit for, it might take another year or two to get the money for a new vehicle. Instead of 10 years, he may have to wait 12. But, um.
And we have a new one on order, right?
We do, yeah.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, has the money in there for that right now. But that, that's a line item that may have to go from, it's at $100,000. Now, we may have to take that to $90,000 or $85,000 for a year or two and travel it back a little bit. We may seriously have to look at this so we can catch our personnel up and keep our road crew on in this town. That would be one area that we could look at.
There's luck.
That would be a, we drop that down for a year to $85,000 instead of $100,000, that's $15,000 we could make up towards our police coverage or personnel salaries. $15,000 would drop that 10.72% down to probably a 9.8, wouldn't it?
I'm doing the math here quickly.
What's the last one you jumped?
And then that's the second thing.
Yeah.
Is the library jump.
If you're gonna take away from the fire department and hand it over to the library, it would be, it's.
The library has its own LLC, their, their own board. Their own trustees, I should say, not their LLCs.
They decide where it goes.
And they set their salaries and stuff. This board does not set salaries for the librarians or whatnot.
But we can give them their allocation and they can allocate it the way they want.
They want to.
Take it away from various other line items if they want a greater salary.
A bottom line number for the library budget. And then they take that budget as their trustees and disperse it out into their line.
I know that, but I'm looking at the jump, from looking at the jump at the library, I'm talking about the lump in the fire department, looking at the library jump too. Oh, I was just curious, um, on others, way down at the bottom, Stonebridge Inn didn't have an allocation for previous year, but this year we have $5,000? Or is that just a typo?
No, we talked about, we talked about this at the last, last meeting.
That was for maintenance.
Anything before, we're just adding it new.
Right, we're adding it new.
And it just wasn't a line item.
We talked about that we had a, um, uh, what line do we call it? It's a building, building equipment fund of $4,200 a year that is in the budget that is a number designed to take care of this building and the grounds, the stone bridge building and the grounds, and the senior center building.
Okay.
I specifically, and we, we kind of talked about this kind of at length. I specifically looked at the Stone Bridge and the revenue that comes out of the Stone Bridge versus the expenses. And coupled with the fact that the Stone Bridge has a preservation trust easement that we're supposed to maintain the exterior of that building in a very.
Because we don't budget it.
We don't budget enough. So I said.
How many, that's painting and window replacement.
Painting maintenance.
Right. That's stuff that all should be budgeted, just like fire trucks.
Yep.
Because you're gonna have to do it.
Um, so, yeah.
The $5,000 is just scratching the surface, really.
Um, it is, honestly.
We did what? That we painted, did the stairs, there's still a lot to do, but we did.
We did the, we put a new porch on it. But, um, I guess it was this summer. But the, the only revenue generator that we have there is Lee Frog Nursery School. And you know, you could, you, instead of calling it Stonebridge Inn, you could say, this is what we budget to house the food chef. Uh, you know, it's kind of,
A little bit cheaper.
Semantics, I guess. We used to have, the other tenant we had there was a Poltonie Meadowway Natural Resources Conservation District, but I think their rent, they haven't been there in a few, couple of years now. I think their rent was like, I want to say it was like $200 a month.
Chamber doesn't pay, right?
Chamber does not pay.
So they have their meetings here, so it makes sense.
Um, pretty much the rest of this is, the rest of the changes, I think, are personnel matters.
The library, it gone up $14,000 something from last year's budget. If we did a slow increase on the library and just cut it in half and put in, I'd increase that $175,937 to that would increase their budget to $183,450.50. That would be almost a $7,500 increase instead of a $14,000 increase.
I just feel like we're cutting something from fire and not giving them.
Well, I, I mean, this is sort of teetering on personnel stuff, I think.
Yeah. I'm just putting the.
Exactly. Because I got a couple, I got a couple of questions.
I'm, I'm just putting a bottom line number out there for thought.
So I don't, I don't see where we can go much further.
Not in this, not without going, getting into people. And that I, I will not, that's an executive session. That's not me.
Not me.
Not me. Somebody's got an SOS call. You need to take that, where we slowly bringing? Okay, so right now, I guess that's where we stand. What was that? If we cut it? Cut that down.
Let me get, let me get real.
If we cut the, that to $85,000 for one year, maybe two and level out and come back up for the fire department.
You get the next due.
Yeah, we, we would just push his plans out a couple of years.
So we heard anything on the education tax increase, for sure? So we heard anything on the education tax increase, for sure?
I haven't yet, no.
It was, I think, seven percent. Then they, they said with the surplus, they're gonna be able to pay it down to like three point eight, three percent. But that's gotta get figured in too.
Yeah, you know, it's always the, that's the only thing about budgeting I don't like in this state. We have to have these budgets.
We're on a different budget schedule.
Yeah, we have to have these budgets set and in print by a certain date. And after this is in and set, and I can't remember if we vote on it by the townspeople or not, then comes the tax rate. So we're kind of, the chickens are already hatched before the hen is even here. And that's something that drives me nuts.
Starts at the top.
There's no way that we can, I, I don't like doing budgets like that. That's, that's not my way.
We're on a different fiscal year and it's, it's too visceral, for sure.
What was that?
Uh, nine point six nine.
Oh, smaller? I thought, I thought it'd be nine eight. It would be nine point six nine. It's a start. So let's continue this in executive session on the nineteenth with our budget meeting and our board meeting. We can, you know, there's not, we just had a, a, a business kind of meeting with the board. There wouldn't be a lot more in between now and Monday, I wouldn't think.
I hope not.
This nineteenth was in lieu of the twenty-sixth, right?
Yeah, right, we pushed it up. So that might just, you know, it might, it'll be a regular meeting, but it might be more towards just the budgeting. But we do need a
Public Congress.
A, a lengthy executive session on that, on that one. That might be pretty, pretty near, pretty close to the entire meeting that night. Excuse me. Okay, so that's where we've started. We're looking at eighty-five, if you guys think.
So these are pretty, we're, we're gonna use these.
We'll use these on the nineteenth. And eighty-five thousand would be instead of a hundred and ten for the fire department, and that would bring it down, just on that alone, would bring it down from ten point seven two to nine point six nine, more than one percent.
They've already got budgeted in for the new truck that's ordered. That's already.
Right, that's already there. That money is there. This is, this is money for the future.
What about the, what about the constable's cruiser? I, I know we do, we do a
Talk about that, yeah.
Public safety lease or, or buy on that as a grant?
Yeah, mostly it's grant.
So do we have to add any more in the budget for that?
We haven't in the past because there's a, there's a, a budget line that he has for tire replacement. That's big.
Yeah, it's, um,
Jack's getting up there, right?
He's just taking fun.
Yeah, he's just taking fun. It's al- it's only thirty-five hundred dollars a year that he put away. I don't, I'd have to look at the report to see where, 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 where it is.
Yeah, I don't think we've touched that in a while.
I remember him telling us that we talked about it, how expensive it was for a new cruiser.
Mm-hmm. He talked about it with us a little bit of a go, but there is a lot of grant money too that we can use with that. We'll have to look at that. Let's put an asterisk next to that and we'll look at that on Monday night too, on that line, cruiser sinking fund.
Start it, we should, or start a little bit earlier, or so that we can really get into that on Monday, or?
I, I wouldn't mind. Can you, everybody's, I know Rick won't be able to. But.
Probably stay at six thirty.
Yeah, we'll stay with a six thirty. And we'll probably end up going right into executive session and going into
I think we could start at six.
I know, that's what I was.
Well, we can start at six.
Chicken, chicken, my gangster's raw.
Nice if we can do what you said, six.
You want to start at six? Let's start it.
Can you do six?
I don't know.
Not too much of a long, long night.
We'll start at six. Let's warn it for six o'clock. We'll start at six o'clock on the nineteenth for our meeting then. All right? Sorry, I was late again.
You're sorry.
I was watching Yellowstone on my treadmill.
Season.
Are, are you taking any comments from the public or?
Oh, there's three people here. Does anybody have comments from the public?
Hi, this is Mary Sue Reed. Um, can you go into, or do you have any figures on the cost of any of the medical and pension benefits for the town employees?
Like what it costs for our health insurance? Will we pay for health insurance?
Correct.
Our premiums each year?
I can, um, so the health and life insurance for the general government, um, is, we, we were proposing, or I'm proposing uh, a budget of seventy-nine thousand, fifty. That includes, um, the town manager's office and the town clerk slash treasurer's office. And then there's an HRA health reimbursement account that the, the working number right now is twenty-four thousand, five hundred for that, for the two offices. And then the highway department, the health and life insurance, um, or the, actually, I should, I should back up because the, the health and life insurance and the HRA, um, or, uh, the bookkeeper and for the town manager are split between the general government and the highway budget, seventy-thirty. So seventy percent on the highway, excuse me, seventy percent on the general government budget and thirty percent on the highway. Um, so for the health and life, for the highway department is eighty-two thousand and the HRA is twenty-five thousand, five hundred for the highway department.
We talked about, that's about nine employees, you said?
Um, yeah, the, the ninth employee was, is covered on the, um, uh, the library budget, isn't a library budget? Yeah.
Mary Sue, let me answer your question.
Um, one more, one more follow-up. What, what percentage of, um, the employee health insurance does, um, the town pay? You know, is there a split between what the employer pays and what the employee pays?
No, the, the, the town pays one hundred percent.
Can I work for you?
If you don't mind making seventeen dollars an hour.
Yeah, that's reflected on their salary because their salaries are exceptionally low.
It's also in our
Personal policy?
Yeah, but it's also in the town report.
Yeah, it's in the town report.
Some of it, right?
Yep.
Yeah, it's also in the town report, Mary Sue. We're also gonna add the, um, HRA, correct?
We're hoping to, we're hoping to vote on it, yeah, separate item.
Okay, great.
The cost for their health.
Be able to see the salary plus what it costs the town for insurance.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I see Nan, Nan Greer, you have your hand up?
Nan, are you there?
I don't know, the hand is up. I don't know if he's got a question or there's no there's no chat in there.
Nan, do you have a, do you have a question?
I do, but no reception. You want, you want to type your question? Does the insurance pay one hundred percent? Isn't that what we just, yes, yes it does.
Yes, it does. That's, uh, yes, it does. What we just discussed.
No. No, I don't know. I do, but no reception. Does the insurance pay one hundred percent? And she typed in no.
You're gonna keep going, yes, I see.
I, I'm running again.
Oh, to you. I'm looking for things.
Clicks, careful.
You, no, you don't have something, but you're just, I'll I, I don't, you typed something, but it's all jarbled. I, I don't understand what you're asking me. You pay one hundred percent. Does the policy pay one hundred percent of claims?
It's okay.
It's okay too.
But the policy doesn't pay, but we do.
That, I, I don't, um, I'll type the answer, but I think she's asking me.
They're about here, the ones that seem like, it's, you guys, I'll just put that.
Hear me now?
Yes. Yes, Nan, can you?
Clarification. I can, loud and clear. So I'm just asking for clarification. You said you pay one hundred percent of
We lost you.
Insurance company pay for one hundred percent of each claim that is submitted?
We, we, we lost you for a minute, so could you restate what you, restate your question, please, cause we only kind of got half of it.
Sorry, I don't know why the reception is going in and out. So you said that, that the town pays one hundred percent of each plans. The plan pays one hundred percent of each claim that is submitted. So if I went to the doctors and my bill was a hundred and fifty dollars, would the insurance company then reimburse a hundred and fifty dollars, or do they pay a eighty percent cop with a twenty percent copay? How does that work?
So I, I typed the response to your question. The town pays the employee premiums and the town pays the employees', uh, deductibles. Is that the question you're asking me?
I think you answered it in a roundabout question. So that, so the employee pays nothing when they go to a doctor's because the town pays a hundred percent of everything.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And that comes out of the HEACRA?
That comes out of the HRA.
Separate. Okay.
That, that comes out of the HRA.
Okay, thank you, Paul. That was what I was asking.
Okay.
Okay, anyone, anyone else have any more, any other questions they would like to ask? Is that it? Okay. So, um, are you a motion to adjourn until Monday night?
We'll move.
Are you a second? Call in favor?
Aye.
For Carrie.
Thank you for, uh, thank you.